The Clerk of Counsel, please call the roll.
Ms. Born?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Attorney?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Genuzen?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Before we get started, I'd like to welcome, we last meeting, we wished Dave well as he did the last roll call, and we want to wish him well after she just did the first one. If you're able, please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. President of Council, the minutes of council meeting for June 20, 2021.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have our meeting minutes as well as our committee, the whole meeting minutes. I know that there wasn't, that has, everything is okay at this point. So I am going to go ahead and make the motion to approve of the minutes of the City Council Committee, the whole meeting held on June 15, and the meeting minutes of the City Council meeting held on June 15, as well as written and dispensed with the reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Attorney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Genuzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Special reports? There are no special reports. Letters, communication, citizen concerns. If there's any citizen who has a concern, would you please call? Well, there's actually two, so three. So please state your name and address.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Pat Jan Cassidy, 862 Louisiana Avenue. We've been there for 26 years. Two things, and I'll talk through the first one. I've had an issue with our storm sewer. The concrete around it has been busted up for four years. I have been in touch with members of the administration for four years. It's still not fixed. Last March, right before the pandemic began, I actually walked up here and talked to Elaine Pantorino and asked her, is there somebody else I can talk to? Give me the name of somebody. And she gave me the name of Matt Koma. And since March, I have been talking to Matt. Matt has come out, looked at it, said, yes, this needs to be repaired. That was 16 months ago, folks. I get that the pandemic and, you know, things were kind of messed up last spring and into early summer. But I'm coming to this group because I don't know what else to do. And I left a message with the administration, and everything's been closed or was closed, at the end of last year over the phone, asked to get a call back, didn't get a call back. So...
Who'd you call?
I called your office, and I got a female message that said, please call, please leave a message, and we'll get back to you. And I haven't heard anything. So I, when I talked to Matt, I've talked to Matt probably every three to four weeks since last March. And the last, well, the second to last communication I had with Matt was in mid-May, and he assured me, we have a contractor that's going to be out, and we'll fix that the very last week of May, right after Memorial Day. Well, that came and went, and that was now five weeks ago. You know, Matt has told me that this is a small project for the city, but it's very expensive because they have to shut down part of Louisiana Avenue, and yada, yada. Look, I'll fix it myself if somebody wants to give me relief. It'll take me an hour. I just, I want some help, and so I'm coming to the council asking. Yeah, I just pulled, we had a bunch of people come over, and I pulled a chunk of concrete that was six inches by four inches by three inches deep, because this has just been going on now for four years. I mean, I think enough's enough. So asking for help, if there's anybody that can help and follow this through, because obviously I'm not doing a very good job.
All right. Well, I have not heard, I have not got a message from you, but I apologize for that. If you did leave a message, I didn't get it. I will follow up with Matt. This is something that's within the administration's purview. It is one of those, it is expensive, usually because of the type of drain that's there. But if he told you it was going to get done, it should have gotten done. So I will, because there are, we have a lot of issues sometimes with contractors and also gandating them to do particular work, because the supply chain is pretty screwed up as far as things go these days. But that's not, that is, it shouldn't be an excuse, especially when we told you. So let me follow up. I assume we have your phone number, because Matt will have your phone number, and we will follow up this week.
I just talked to Matt again today, so Matt has my phone.
All right. I will follow up with Matt.
I appreciate the supply chain issues, and that's, you know, that's what's been going on now. But that doesn't work for four years ago or even a year.
Well, I understand four years ago. I know, last year, we weren't having people do certain types of work like that because of the pandemic and the proximity that they would be with each other. So some of that work was postponed because they would have to been in the same hole together, and we were trying to keep social distancing to protect staff and that. But that should have been conveyed to you.
Yeah.
That should have, that, so I will speak to our team, and we will address that. And I apologize for him saying that it was going to get done. It hasn't gotten done. That's certainly a fair question, and we'll follow up. And if we say we're going to get it done, we'll get it done. Otherwise, we will tell you why it's not getting done.
Well, this was going to get done late last summer, early in the fall. So again, this has been just ongoing.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that, and we're going to have a discussion about communication with our residents, so...
Yeah. So second question, it's really just around who manages or who makes recommendations with traffic flow. So, oh gosh, it was 10, 15 years ago. There used to be a light on Seventh Street, Seventh and Louisiana, and it, there was good communication, hey, we're going to trial, taking this down, made good sense at the time. But I think what's happened in the last, you know, with the growth of the city and certainly with the growth of things downtown, we just see a constant flow of traffic coming. And if you think about it, from Indiana Avenue headed south to South Boundary, that's three quarters of a mile. And I, you know, I've been in touch with Officer Cunningham, the police, about, hey, you got people going 55, 60 miles an hour going down the street. They've put up a speed sign so at least people realize how fast we're going. But I'm asking, again, the council, who or what group takes a look at traffic flow? And just, and just making sure the traffic gets metered. There has been times, my neighbors, we've talked about this, where if it's busy, it's five minutes until we get out of our driveways.
That is also the purview of the administration, and it sounds like you've been tied to Officer Cunningham in the Police Department. Speeding, as you probably can guess, is an issue throughout the community, and it isn't necessarily people visiting our community. Unfortunately, it is us who are speeding the most in Perrysburg. It is our residents. And so we have a number of issues regarding speed, but I would agree, I was on council when the decision was made to take that light out at Seventh Street. It did make sense, but I was also driving on yours, on Louisiana, this weekend twice, and I was going pretty much to the speed limit, and people were lined up behind me like a parade.
Yeah.
So I will convey that. It is a city, it is a city-controlled street, and there's what's called warrants, though, from ODOT regarding speed, and it really is properly, properly marked as a proper speed, but it's an enforcement question. And it is a big issue throughout the community. So, but I will again relay your concerns to Chief Jones, and we will try, and we will try and slow the traffic down there, because it is a street that's supposed to be used for connectivity, but it is not. It narrows there, and it should be slower. So I definitely understand your legitimate concern about that, and I will pass it on to Chief Jones.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, can I speak on that intersection? I recently brought this up to our administrator about the corner of Louisiana and Seventh, because I, my wife and I walk our grandchildren there, cross that school crossing there every morning during the school year. Yes, okay. And I was talking to the crossing. We need that to be a school, I really think we need a school zone speed limit in there, in that, just at that intersection during those critical hours. I've, we've crossed, and even though the crossing guard goes out east, people have come to a screeching halt sometimes. They're going so fast, they're on their way to work, they're looking down at their phones, who knows what. And so Ms. Cabot has been looking into this for me and checking with our engineer in the school on what possibility of getting a, at least get a school zone speed limit at 20, 20 mile an hour school. So, so just wanted to let you know, there's, I've been talking about this too, because I'm very much aware of that intersection.
Yeah, I can tell you, speaking with several residents on Louisiana Avenue, we're not the only ones that have the concern. And Officer Cunningham has been just wonderful to talk to and listens and understands and has pressed better concerns on, so...
I have a quick question. I didn't hear your first statement, because I don't know if it's a speaker or your head was turned or whatever, but I didn't hear what you said in the beginning. What was, whatever...
Sewer?
Yeah, that's...
Storm sewer?
Storm sewer.
Storm sewer. Storm sewer at the end. It's actually at the end of my neighbor's driveway. Our driveway's probably...
Yeah, I've been here and I was trying to figure out, catch baseball. Okay, thank you.
And it goes pretty deep, but it is old, and I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, that was all redone when they redid Louisiana. Goes back to my baseball coaching days. 2009, 2010. Yeah, it's probably been 10, 10, 11 years ago, but...
Well, we will, I apologize for main purposes that we haven't delivered on, but we will work on that, and then we'll talk to, about the enforcement issue.
And then the last issue, still another Louisiana Avenue issue. It's Louisiana Avenue and South Boundary. When you're headed south on Louisiana and you're trying to make that left turn, there's no left turn lane, and sometimes traffic just, I mean, we're lucky to be on maybe two sometimes when it's busy.
And again, just, I don't know who the traffic engineers. We live it every day. Try going left during the junior...
School pickup, school drop off, yeah.
Yeah, I, yes. I know exactly what you're talking about as well. That, we have a new, we have not had a city engineer. We just hired a city engineer last year on his rank of priorities. That is on the list, but hasn't been at the top. But I think, I do, yes, you can only get one car through at times sometimes.
I'm happy to help and be on any committee if they want data. There you go.
All right. So I will pass that on to our city engineer, Police Department, and to utilities.
Thanks for your...
Any other street?
No.
Thank you. No, thank you very much for coming forward. I appreciate that. Anyone else there?
It's been a while since I came up here and harassed you guys.
Uh, would you, huh? For the record, would you say your name?
You can say it. I'll get it.
Yeah, we have, uh, yeah.
Oh, yes. Sarah Weizenberger, 605 West Front Street. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak here on something that I'm very passionate about. I will try and keep it brief, but I did write it down because I don't want to miss any details. Recently, I read that Mr. Krebs was retiring. He was an excellent city employee. He was always quick to give me information when I requested. He had, he had an unquestionable dedication to the city, and I wish him well in retirement. I read the Messenger Journal. He stated, "The city has $60 million in the bank. The city of Perrysburg is financially very strong and well positioned for the future." He was not exaggerating. In the general fund in the past 15 years, the city has collected $12 million more in citizens' tax dollars than it expended. General fund cash and investments increased $11 million. The general fund balance increased $10 million. Income tax revenue has more than doubled from $9 million to $20 million. At the end of 2020, the city produced $1.8 million in general fund net income, and a large portion of that ended up in the cash account. On the city's audited financial statements, there's a line titled "Basic Utility Services." Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's a line item where refuse and recycling falls. In the same 15-year period, the cost of the service increased $400,000, or 48%, which is roughly 3% a year. Compare that to 458% increase in cash, or 31% a year. There are core services that a city provides: police, fire, streets, courts, and refuse collection. When cash is increasing in the millions nearly every year, why are we still keeping the refuse collection in a separate fund? It is a basic utility service. I noted that the administration asked and the council approved placing a levy on the ballot for this basic utility service. I see from the minutes, there wasn't even any discussion. Now, 2020 was a difficult year for citizens. Many lost their jobs, many lost their businesses. Many were just afraid of what the world was going to look like in 2021. You guys missed a golden opportunity to provide even the slightest relief to the citizens by not again asking for this levy. I have heard every argument as to why this administration continues to place this levy on the ballot. It was placed on the ballot decades ago because the city was considering privatizing refuse collection. No one is talking about privatizing refuse collection anymore. The city does not need this levy. The levy dates back to roughly 1983. So what? This levy is as old as I am. It doesn't make it any more necessary because of its age. It should be evaluated every year. The city does not need this levy. The cost of recycling is increasing. So what? The city has $14 million sitting in cash. That covers all general fund expenses for 10 months of the year. The city does not need this levy. This levy passes with at least 70% of the vote. So what? I bet if you ask those 70% of people, 95% of those voters have never looked at the city's financials and realized the city was hoarding cash. The city does not need this levy. This is not a left versus right issue. This is not a liberal versus conservative issue. This is not even a Democrat versus Republican issue. It is a right versus a wrong issue. And in 2021, coming out of a rough year for many citizens, the city, which is financially very strong, pocket stuffed and overflowing with cash, is coming to the citizens with its hands out, asking for more. This has got to stop. It is wrong of principle. It is wrong of policy, and I respectfully ask the council to reconsider placing this levy on the ballot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Administrative reports. Okay. Couple things. First, I hope everybody enjoyed the Fourth of July and had a chance to see the state's fireworks presentation on Third. We have received very good reviews, and I've spoken to the mayor of Ma'Me, and he would like to make sure that we continue going forward to apply the same amount we did this year to the fireworks. And I think that's a pretty good idea, so we're going to recommend that in the budget when that time comes. I'd also like to thank all the administrative team that was involved making the fireworks happen. If you were at the Ford or near the Ford or on any road in the city on Third, you saw the street division was involved in a number of aspects of making sure the fireworks were successful, as were, of course, the police, the fire, the police and fire department. So I want to recognize all those employees who missed time with their family on the holiday to be able to make sure that we were safe and were able to enjoy the fireworks. So I want to point that out. I have no other report. City administrator is not here. Finance director, your big chance?
I have nothing to report.
Well, so some things never change.
See, you learned well.
Law director?
I have a request to city council.
I am going to go ahead and make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of pending or imminent court action.
One second.
Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Attorney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Genuzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Should be relevant to shore with those. Well, elected officials.
Politicians here.
One of them pulled my computer. Neither have I. I wouldn't give you one. You'd save it for later.
This is income. So maybe it was just all the various things. Well, I think people... If I did stuff in the... If they had been funded, it's services were cut out. There's funds. Money and funds paid right now.
We had one or two ready to be in the season, and there's been one that must have invested on a couple of hours, three or four days.
And I brought it up. Could be too hot. I... I could stop it. Done.
I want to get a comment. I don't know if you know the background of this.
I know that they wanted to...
This was in my... There's a councilman here, very simple. They're Weizen, they're very... Even a spot of the organization. Weizner, dedicated to the American government, one of the... National markets. What number, 49. They had more computed, 36 doors, supposed to be processing versus bid. And of course, the Batman, you and the ass-... What guys not very good at, too, because they come in and give you a bid, and then have to sell your cards and break up the whole, then kick it off, and it doesn't... But finally, the council was somewhat close to it, some coordination. So they decided to put this up the ballot, and then we all signed. The nation council wasn't wanting to have us do this. This is what it's going to cost. And other way, and we were processing, anyway, we're going to put it on the map. But I, it's one of those unfortunate things that's come around. They say those people look at it on the ballot and just say, "All right, we need to...". So I encourage you, directors, to really think that...
Well, it's already been approved.
I know, but I'm pulling it. It very much shows, yeah. But you see what you said, sir. Most of the people who voted didn't have the information. People have that information, and what...
They didn't discuss it. They didn't discuss, they didn't, they discussed a little bit, yes, but they did it.
Well, you know, you know, that a lot of us... It's a long, very, very, long, very, very years ago.
Right. Well, it's every two years. Two years ago, most of these guys should have looked at it then.
Well, once, once something like that gets out of the ballot, it's a good to have, you know, just start a little, something close to the same. It's so horrible. I, whatever, as long as I have some counsel, I would, I would, I would...
I want them to not know that.
Because they, I don't know, there's...
There's no way it will continue to pass until they don't put it up there.
Actually, something. But it's fair to say that there's...
Yeah, I know. I'll have to...
Well, again, I'm not in a mood to help, but I think the key to this is there's got to be a moderate in the issue, and I'm fairly aware of what's going on in the state, and I do, and I think most people have the same understanding. They feel different. Well, 2017, as we actually discussed it. There's a guy in town, James Bryant, called him, and he said, "He says he better go, he probably... I mean, I don't see, but I'm attention, but he's very focused, or..." I mean, I've always thought this is an unfortunate thing. It's a way to anti-additional tax.
One way to drive, it also may touch the situation, probably getting laid off, because...
Well, it's much easier to control costs and build on this providing services, because if you're dependent on outside provider, it's just going to be outside provider, so... Yeah, I believe that that's true, so we, we have to have years of... That's all nonsense. I think we're...
You can see it. 2008, when I bought the trucks from the Toaters, they bought two new trucks last year. But...
But I think cost is pretty much... Exactly.
Yeah, you know, truck, truck owners. I made about the... City-wise, city waters, there were all the other ones. The city made $10,000, $500,000 in cash last year, 2020. How? I mean, that's, that is, our water rates go into that, our income tax revenue, our profit tax revenue, all of that, it's $1,500,000.
I would say that water, water is, is, is taken. You can't use that for anything else, other than water.
Yeah. You increase the rates?
Yeah.
Or that increase the rates as much as they are.
Yeah. And things, you know, some cities, they love, we need some police cars to see if you got the water fees. But you can actually raise the rates, and all of them stay in that, kick. And I think, and I don't have this discussion, I'm very far in shape, but I think, but I think they step on mine. We should spend a lot, something else that I'm...
Well, if I Google, what is the risk that a municipality is holding savings? And it's expensive. It applies to...
And some people, it's hard enough to put the bottom line, or whatever, but most people, yeah, they stand up. That's why they set out on COVID.
Well, the city of...
That, yeah, that's why I say just...
They're holding $200,000. Yeah. And they took away the, the one service that... What other service? Actually, you saw... I don't, for me, I have a town, and you know, I don't hear anything from the service committee, or I don't hear anything. If you got that, oh. It is a long, long time. Long time, but...
I thought we were...
I think if... Good luck on your street. Yeah.
Sure.
Oh, good. It's a good. Thank you.
Oh, I know, I know, I know.
Geez, wait.
I understand.
Thank you.
Ru, ru, yeah. Ru, yeah.
Guess I'll make a motion to return from executive session.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. McTernan.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
All right. President of Council report.
Thank you, Mary. I have two things, one's on the agenda, just a reminder, as we all have here, is there's going to be a public hearing prior to the August seventeenth council meeting. Uh, there should be three of them, one at six oh five, one at six ten and six twenty. Now, regarding a rezoning request to our district boundaries and a proposed code amendment on fences, walls and structural screens, hedges and screen lighting, so. Um, and then the big item on the agenda here is the conversation that we've been having here for some time regarding the clerk of council and council recorder. For those who are not aware, um. Dave Krebs, our former finance director and now our current finance director Amber are have served in the role of clerk of council. Um, and then our council recorder, Mary Jo, is going to be looking to, um, eventually step down here. With a big smile on her face. Um, but we need to find a way to, um, fulfill that role. And we had a conversation in the past about separating the clerk of council and creating a separate position. Uh, what I am proposing is that we look for of combining the two, uh, together under the clerk of council. Um, and creating that to be, uh, essentially both to create a more than just a part time. A typical twenty hour part time might be a little bit more than that. Um. To, uh, um. Move forward with that. So I know I sent an email out to everyone with the job description. I sent it to the administration. I did not hear anything back, uh, from the administration. If the administration has any thoughts on that. Uh, but I would hear some input from council members to see where everyone, um, is thinking. Uh, my thought process with combining the two is if we separate them, it's going to be hard to bring them back together. Or if we hire one person for one thing to grow into a position, uh, there are, that might not be what someone. We might not get their best talent if we don't go in with both. So.
Um, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
I have a question and I don't think we've thought about it or not, but Amber has obviously been trained to do the clerk of council position by Dave. So I'm wondering if you've thought about her.
We could have someone from administration staff, um, continue that role. My thought is to completely separate it from the administration to have someone that is solely focused on, uh, the clerk of council duties. And I just noticed that for some reason, my clerk of council, uh, word document that I opened is blank. And I got to figure out what happened to everything I saved. Um. So my thought is that we look at trying to combine the two positions to create a more permanent, um. Position as well as give more hours to hopefully attract better, to attract the talent. Because from one of the conversations we've had in the past is prior to Mary Jo, there was, um. Uh, an attempt to hire someone specifically as recording secretary. And, uh, I believe we went through many different individuals to eventually where the city went internally, uh, just for the recording secretary portion. So if we had more job duties on that, my thought is that we're going to get, uh, better quality talent, someone that's going to want to be here and can actually do the job. And I'm going to see if I can try to find mine. I just. Word document. Yeah. I forwarded what you forwarded and it had content. Okay. I just opened it up and again, this time it opened up with.
And then again, um, would I ask you Cory this or you this question? Uh, would this be coming out of the personnel committee, obviously, then?
So this is what is coming out of the personnel committee at this point. We had a, there was a brief conversation at the personnel committee at the last one, unfortunately, due to my own time constraints. I had to to leave early, otherwise there was no one there to watch my kids. Um, so I wanted to bring this up to discussion as a whole, so we can hopefully come to a decision either at this one or possibly the next council meeting. And once we can have some legislation created, uh, to begin moving forward with this position. If we have some thoughts, this is what the discussion is hopefully going to be here tonight. So, um, any thoughts on the job descriptions or anything that I sent out on that?
Well, just a question. So you'd have this position, Amber would be here, there'd be this clerk of council person.
There'd be a clerk of council person at this point.
They'd be a recording secretary. I I'm not. I've struggled with this concept. I'm just not sure if I would change from our current model and have Amber do it as we have. And then just hire a recording secretary. If if we did, I understand your concern that if you don't make it attractive enough, you're not going to get somebody, but.
I think everyone knows what the hiring environment is right now.
I know, I know. Um, but I I. I I don't really see a place for this position other than, uh, attending committee meetings and doing minutes as Mary Jo does now. And then, you know, sitting in the council, doing what Dave did for however many years and what Amber is doing tonight. I I. Once I get beyond those duties, I saw your job description, I'm, I I don't. I I'm just not seeing enough that would justify. And you you gave a proposed wage range, that's that's fine. You know, then as you said, the thing you got to talk about office space, you know, computers, all that sort of thing. And I I'm just not seeing a role for this individual that we couldn't fill with what we have right now. Have Amber do what Dave did and then hire someone to do what Mary Jo does. And if we can't hire that someone, then yeah, we do have to go to a plan B, but. I I I'm. I've never gotten the rest of the story to get those two core principles. I mean, we talked initially about them almost being like a staff person, the council. And I think, I know I had reservations about that. I think others did as well. And I I think Jonathan, you you maybe even backed away a little bit from that idea. So I'm I'm just not seeing enough to really justify a different position. I I I'd be inclined to go out and see if there's someone out there. We've had people in the past, I can't remember all the names, who served as our recording secretary. And then there it it could be something that would, um. You know, you might, you might find a decent person who would want to do it. To, you know, it meets their schedule, they have evenings, they have ability in the evenings to do that kind of work. Everyone has computers now, it seems. Um, and they might have an interest in the city. So I'm, I'm just having trouble with the idea that this would be a new position that we'd have, we need to fill.
I I know the past as well, and and those in the administration correct me on this if I'm incorrect on this, is that even with the clerk of council, there were duties that was shared within other administrative staff as well when it came to communication. Uh, from certifying records, uh, the filing of the the records and the documents and so forth. So there's, there's a little bit more that's spread out from just the the current clerk and it would help ease some of the, um. Uh, additional workload that's put on within the staff of the finance department. And it's, again, this is nothing against Amber or or Mary Jo. It's, it's trying to find a fit as we continue to expand as a city. I've noticed that there's many communities, uh, across the state of Ohio that have this as a s- a specific separate position due to, um, some of the demands that they're starting to see.
Oh, well, I guess from administration has no, I mean, this is council's prerogative. Um, it would be though, if there was a person doing this that right now, uh, I have conveyed and I know council members have heard me saying that, you know, if you want to access or talk to the planning zoning office or the finance department or knock yourself out, we're, we have nothing to hide here. And you don't have to run anything through, um. Through a clerk of council. But if there's a clerk of council, uh, our, we don't, we would, we would say that's the proper place for a council to pass things through to, um. And I mean, a lot, the lawyer would still have to do, uh, certain things, but but we already have the lawyer doing the public records request and those kind of things. So, uh, but if there was a clerk of council, it would, it would, we would suggest that everything would have to go through the clerk of council because that's other than if there was a change right now. Um, some of that is set up to pass through the finance director slash clerk of council. Right now, it's been my opinion and I was on council, I appreciated part of the benefit of being in a community like Perrysburg, as you could call utilities department or if you want to talk to Alice or if you want to talk to Virgil, uh, you know, we wouldn't have that layer. But if at a certain point, there is very much some legitimacy to what Jonathan is saying. And and if council believes that that's the time, now's the time to do that, you know, that's okay. But we just need to kind of get moving on this because we do have some kind of constraints as far as, uh, getting somebody on board. Uh, and I do want to make sure Mary Jo is happy as much as possible. So, um, that would be, uh, the council, the administration is no real recommendation other than we do need to get some guidance from council.
And is, and I have a question. If 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 council moves forward and wants to do this, um, then it's up to council to, um, advertise for this position, interview for it and everything. Is that, does the administration get involved at all with any of that?
So clerk of council.
Then, yeah, I mean, to get us.
Still need to have at least the HR division.
Yeah, does the HR division.
We would certainly help with the HR department, but that would be another example of the clerk of council role as opposed to just working through HR.
Now, if if we do nothing different than, then the administration will just try to fill Mary Jo's spot.
She cannot, her spot cannot be filled, but we will try and.
Well, yeah, I know that's.
Thanks for teeing that up for me, though. So, yes.
But yes. Get us a new.
Yes, we will try.
That would all be on the administration.
We would work with council to participate in that as well.
All right. I just want to see how, I just was interested in the procedure.
I think I kind of view this as, clearly, we have an immediate need with trying to get this, uh, the council recorder position filled. Um, I I agree with Jonathan. What I, my perspective is this council recorder is going to be working, uh, recorder is going to be at these meetings, working pretty closely with council members. Um, Mary Jo emails us quite frequently for people that don't know that, uh, with these minutes, uh, making sure our reports are are the way we like them. Um, and I I could see a new hire potentially blossoming into a clerk of council position if the fit is right. Right now, I I'm kind of with, uh, Councilman McCarthy where I don't see the need for a position by itself. I don't even know what I would use that person for at this point, uh, because I have, I have access to whatever I need access to. Um, kind of like what Tom's saying. Uh, as the city grows, I could see a need for that to to be, uh, be there. But right now, I I have access to the information I need to from the administration. If that were not the case, then I would of course be advocating for a clerk of council. So, um, I guess I'm more focused on the council recorder, uh, position. Um, I would say we should be, I know you threw out eighteen to twenty-three, I think we should be between twenty and twenty-five. Um, and also figure out whether this person's going to be, um. Expected to, I I know right now Mary Jo comes to the meetings. I don't know if we have the technology to where someone can record the meeting and they can create minutes from those, what's required, uh, along that regard. Uh, but I would, I would kind of like to see that plan, uh, first before moving forward with a full fledged clerk of council.
I I have to agree with Cory on that. I I do like going straight to any department head here with a question. I would not like going through that other layer. And and is that what you're saying, Jonathan? We would have to go through our clerk to get any answers?
I don't know if I'm saying that, but it sounds to me that that would be.
I.
We would be.
Yeah, I just, I I think I would have a problem.
So so that was going to be my question, because with every change, there's advantages and disadvantages. So I just wanted to clarify. So why would we, 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 why would we be required to go through the clerk of council versus our current method of?
That's what the abduties you described would do.
That, so that's an exclusive position?
Well, I would say from the administration's point of view, you're hiring somebody who's paying them to do a duty. And and we won't want to duplicate it. And administration works for the administration. Council clerk would work for the clerk, for a council. And it would seem that the best, most consistent approach would be, why would you have clerk of the council if you're going to continue to talk directly to, let's just say, the planning zoning office? At a certain point, I mean, I I don't think it would be an absolute bar, I mean, but I think that there would be a process. Why would you have somebody who's paid to do open meeting, sunshine laws, when we have a law director who essentially is doing that for council and the and the administration now? You'd, I mean, you would be, you would be just delegating duties and and the administration's position would be if somebody's getting paid to do that, they should do it. And that would free, frankly, my law director up to do other stuff that administration would want to have done. So, uh, I I don't think, I didn't mean it as a, as a, as draconian, but I'm just saying that we, the duties are consistent with people, duties that clerk of council already does with with what the law director does and what other people do. Uh, and so to avoid redundancy and inconsistency, if you have a clerk of council, why would you go to Brody if you, if he's going to say, go to the clerk of coun, I mean, you're just.
So I, and I understand, I understand your point. And and I guess when this idea of a separate clerk of council was brought up, I was hoping that we could come up with enough things for them to do and we would justify the position and not have to give up the ability to talk to whomever. To that, to me, that's a, it's a true negative. So that's why I want a clarification on that. Now, I I am struggling with, is there enough work, um, for a clerk of council for for this council at the size that we're at? And I I'm not sure we have that, so.
The administration is happy to keep talking about this and this might be some budget item that we.
Well, this isn't a permanent decision. I mean, it would be. It it may well come back again some other day.
Well, I, as I mentioned before, this is Councilwoman Born. Um, I I'm fine with Amber doing the finance position and the clerk clerk of council position. She's already been trained for both. She's already here. Let's just keep her in those roles.
We do have to replace our recorder. That's a no brainer.
Right.
But I think it'd be remiss of us, considering the growth we've been experiencing and continued experience, to not at least have this conversation. Because I'm sure it'll be coming a time, come a time when we will need it. Um, I just think that's something to keep in mind.
Well, it sounds to me that at this point, we'll be looking at at least getting that council recorder position open. I do believe that something we should have in the background by moving forward with this clerk of council, especially as the city continues to grow. And expand in the size of the administration continues to grow and expand. Uh, we already know how difficult it is, uh, especially in this light of the pandemic, uh, with, uh, communication at times. Um, but, uh, I think council recorder is something we should be looking forward to, to put out there. Um, do we have an idea of what the wage range should be going? Um, do we have an idea of what the wage range should be going to put that out there? I'm assuming we would give them a two-hour minimum any time that they would show up, um, to be here, whether they're here for thirty minutes or an hour. They would still get paid at least for two hours of work to make it worth their time. Um, any thoughts on wage ranges to put out there or what any expectation is?
I think the two of you have ranges that are pretty close, eighteen to twenty-three, twenty to twenty-five. I think at that point, that's what Kelly does. You know, I think Kelly would have to take a look at, okay, what's the market for that, you know, that, that set of job responsibilities? What should the wage rate be?
We need some guidance from all of you for that.
She typically comes to personnel and we, we'd, uh.
I'd hate to drag this out any further for Mary Jo's sake.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, the administration would like to get any add posted.
Tomorrow.
Well, I mean, I don't know. Why, I don't know why you couldn't start immediately. I mean.
Eighteen to twenty-three and if we need to go higher, we go up.
Yeah, I mean.
Or eighteen to twenty-five and.
Eighteen to twenty-five and see who we get is.
Yeah.
I agree with Mr. McCarthy. I think eighteen to twenty-three is very reasonable.
I think you all are going to have to vote.
So I, I guess what we'll have to do is, um, while we make a motion to go forward with a, um, council recorder, um, eighteen to twenty-five dollars per hour, uh, with a minimum of a two-hour pay for any time they come to the meetings.
Well, that's, that's one thing I want clarification on if I, if I can get it. This person's job is going to be to help prepare these reports, right? Do they have any, uh, and we're giving Mary Jo for not knowing exactly, uh, what your duties are here. You make fantastic reports, but is there something they have to do at the actual meeting? Or is that? Is it something?
He's asking, do you need to be here?
We are recording audio or recording?
And they work from home.
What if the recording didn't work? And that person's not here taking notes? You have to have minutes of a public meeting that's.
No.
A law. If that recording for some reason didn't work, you have nothing.
Rest of all.
Okay, but do we have, we have audio, right?
It's all together.
Yeah, but what happens if it fails is what she's saying. You need someone to be here.
For some reason that recording.
Well, it'd be, it'd be almost the same as not having a quorum. You can cancel a meeting.
No, no, you have to by law have, if you have a meeting, you have the three people are here, it doesn't, nobody's in the room.
Mr. Coleman, she's saying, what if you didn't know it didn't record?
Right.
So you got to the end of the meeting, assuming the minutes were working.
At a public meeting without a meeting.
Turns out they didn't record.
We also have another requirement that we're required to hold two council meetings every month. And if we were to cancel the council, maybe we'd have to immediately reschedule that as well. And again, how would we know that it didn't record until we're on?
I guess the administration's point of view would be, uh, technology is not so certain that you shouldn't have somebody present to make sure that the law is complied with having somebody here.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm asking the question, just so, so everyone is aware of that.
But apparently certain council members have really low voices that are not picked up on recorder.
Set a hand, I see you up there, Jan.
Could be, could be.
I do have a question, um, since I'm going to be the one who has to report this to Kelly. You said two-hour minimum for appearing.
Correct.
Now, is it hourly then for the work they do outside a meeting? So if it takes them thirty minutes to draft a, draft minutes, they get paid for thirty minutes or is it? I'm just asking to make sure.
No, I think in the past, it has been two-hour minimum for the attending in the meeting and then time spent doing the work, doing the work.
That was my understanding. Yeah, but that's, that's what it has been for past reports.
Okay, so is there over here?
There's a minimum of two hours.
For meetings, then time paid as spent doing the work?
I think we're going to have to.
I just wanted to clarify so if Kelly asks me.
Which, you know, that's pretty standard. Especially in my union organizations that they get a meeting.
Okay, so I have the motion on the floor.
This is busy the second.
Hold on, oh yeah, we, yeah, we, wait, let's go, let's have a second and then let's have further discussion. Second, all right, so let's have discussion on the motion that Jonathan has introduced. All right, so let's go this way, I guess.
Okay.
Do you mean?
Read, read it again, how it, how it reads, Amber, if you would.
Okay.
No pressure at first meeting.
Hiring the council recorder with a two-hour minimum for meetings at eighteen to twenty-five dollars per hour.
Right.
Yeah. Do you have discussion?
No, I don't.
Okay, one of my questions is, is this person going to have a desk here, computer here? I, I, and this is not a pertinent, I, I still, we'll be voting for this motion, but it's one of those things that.
They're going to have to have technology and that's.
If they have technology, they would get access to our, to get access to our network, which is totally secure now because we have, security is such a, ransomware is such a big deal. They would, they would have to probably be provided a computer and access by Gary for the purposes of their job. They couldn't be informed of a job without a computer, so they, a computer would be provided to them.
Okay. But I, I guess the reason I'm asking that is, I, to me, the optics are bad. If we come here, we have a ten-minute committee meeting, we're paying two hours for that and they have a desk right here and the next day they come to the desk and they write up the minutes for that meeting and the report for that meeting. We're paying three hours for a fifteen-minute. I, that, that's why, that's the motive behind my question. So those things could probably be ironed out.
But, well.
I would assume that they would, after the meetings, they would be staying to do the minutes because usually it's fresh in your mind, but that's.
I would also say in the past, we have, for the past, Tim would recall, we have had several, Vivian and Jamie, um, that you're, you're taking somebody to take out of their schedule to come here. Oftentimes meetings are, you know, hopefully under two hours. Sometimes end up being two hours when you didn't think it was going to be the case. But, uh, uh, because of the inconvenience, there's a factor that's a minimum, it seems very fair to me. So I would not, I would think it would be fair to say that if you were to go take out of your schedule on a night to come, you don't want to just be paid for half hour, an hour. You should be paid two, I mean, that would be.
And I don't think that's what he's asking though.
No, I completely agree with that. I'm almost thinking of the language of, you're going to get paid two hours minimum for attending a committee meeting and preparing the reporter minutes for that meeting.
But sometimes the minutes are very long.
Right, and they would be compensated if they spent more time.
Well, it's your guys' motion, so that, I, I, because I, the way I have the motion is, is to have two hours for any meetings. If they do any additional time outside of that to actually prepare the, the meeting minutes over the council, um, committee meeting minutes, that they are compensated justly for that as well.
Right here. Um, yeah, I do have one concern about this position and maybe you've, you've had these recorders in the past and it, I'm thinking if it's someone, it's definitely a part-time and it's definitely going to be evenings. So someone that has this job is going to be making arrangements, could be babysitting arrangements and things like that. And many times in just last month, we had three committee meetings get canceled. Um, now, I know you said they get two hours to show up. What about any compensation for canceling a meeting? Because, you know, um, I'm just thinking, you know, it's going to take a unique type of person that to have this job say, we don't, you, you get it when we need you, but sometimes they're canceled, these, I've seen these meetings get canceled with short notice too.
Well, it has to be there twenty-four hours.
So yeah, yeah, that's not, yeah, that's a great point, Jan. If we could at least give them twenty-four hours notice. Like if it gets canceled in less than, within twenty-four hours, maybe they ought to get that two hours of show-up pay.
It has to be canceled within twenty-four hours per.
Maybe that's a problem, we wait till we, till we get to, let's try to get the post first.
Right.
Okay, but that's the only concern I have with getting the right person that would want this job and just, but knowing ahead of time, it might not be as many hours as you think it is.
It could be more.
Yeah, it has to be more, Tavia.
I have another question.
I'm fine.
All right, let's, um, any other questions? We'll call the roll.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. And I do appreciate, um, Councilman Smith's concerns about making sure that, uh, provide to do the, these cities business that we make sure that council that moves down. There is a point where we're getting, we're going to need to, so I do appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. That is the end of my report and we can actually get into the council meeting now, so.
Okay.
Committee reports, finance.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the finance committee did not meet and so our next meeting is next Tuesday, July thirteenth at five-thirty PM.
Safety committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, no report, our next scheduled meeting is, um, twenty-seventh, Tuesday of July at six PM.
You, recreation.
I'm sorry, um, we were, I thought I was talking.
I said, and I, as I just labeled it as scheduled.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, recreation.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. The next recreation committee meeting is scheduled for July thirteenth at six-thirty PM.
Planning and zoning.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. We're scheduled to meet on July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one at five-thirty PM, but, uh, that date is a question mark. I expect that cancellation sometimes occurs, so there's some moving parts associated with that. We do have an ordinance though that has been introduced. That is, I'd like to introduce ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-twenty-one and move that there will be suspended without a changing number of titles. With the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-eight, two thousand twenty-one and ordinance emitting classified zoning ordinance twelve fifteen point five eight C of the City of Perrysburg zoning code to define what is.
I would then move that ordinance, uh, thirty-eight dash twenty-twenty-one be passed.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
End of report.
Thank you very much. Personnel committee.
There is a report and I will hand that over to Councilman McCarthy to report on since I was absent.
Uh, yes, we met on June twenty-second at five-ten PM. Also present for Bridget, Jason Gatto and Kelly Chelfin, our research manager. The minutes of the May twenty, twenty-twenty-one meeting were approved. Uh, we then heard from Scott DeHart of Zashen and Rich, uh, who appeared by Zoom to review the wage compensation study prepared by his firm. He gave us the background on how they prepared the survey for the study. Uh, and he ended up proposing broad bands, uh, each with minimum and maximum salaries. And then their sample of communities they looked at to design those bands were double contiguous counties and cities close to Perrysburg in demographics. Uh, he then went through the methodology used in the executive summary using the deputy finance director as an example. Uh, Mr. Weber asked if the administration has had internal discussions about the study. Ms. Cabot said that there are three or four positions with more than a thirty percent differential of their counterparts. And that the administration plans to meet the mayor at some point to discuss these. But they would like to, the committee to move the band concept on to city council. Finally, Ms. Cabot added that they may need action from city council on equity adjustments that are beyond what the mayor can approve. The current ordinance allows the mayor to vary up to seven percent. Um, and adjustments beyond that may be needed in some of those cases. So, uh, we'd also, Ms. Cabot again said they'd like to have language to maintain the band, bands with scheduled reviews in the future. And I think our understanding was that Kate, our law director, will be working on something for us to consider and then eventually present to council. Uh, we then spent the balance of the meeting talking about the clerk of council position we just finished talking about. Uh, and then, um, there had been discussion at previous meeting about salaries for the mayor and council. We, that item was tabled and we'll take up from that meeting. End of report, we have no legislation. Cory, you can tell us when we have to be.
Next meeting is, uh, July twenty-seventh at five.
Okay, just to clear, um, Mr. Coleman, we've had you an email asking if we could move that meeting?
Yes, we did. I think I have.
Is it possible to move that meeting to July twentieth? The human resources director and the law director are not going to be available on the twenty-seventh, which will impact the wage study conversation, we think.
I cannot be there the twenty-ninth.
The twentieth, two zero.
That should work. Five o'clock.
Other committee members, can they do the twentieth at five o'clock?
That's fine. Five PM on the twentieth, Tuesday the twentieth.
Yes. Okay, that being done, can we go back then to Mr. McCarthy, who would like to move planning and zoning to?
Well, you had, on the twenty-seventh, I think you had a safety committee meeting at six. Yes, that's, I can go ahead.
Well, and as far as you know.
We're, we're lacking agenda items, that's why we're.
I think that you, we, we'll talk, we'll email everybody that one, we'll figure that one out at a different time. All right, thank you. I appreciate the.
I believe that will be available. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, public utilities. Thank you, Mayor. As, uh, just kind of mentioned, a clerk would be very helpful though. Glad to see some laughs. Uh, no, uh, nothing on the, no meeting here for public utilities. Our next scheduled meeting is going to be on July twenty-eighth at, uh, six-thirty PM. That is all, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, uh, service committee.
Uh, we did not meet last month, but we did, uh, call a special meeting today at six PM to talk about two resolutions that we are recommending to be sent on to council. Uh, the first one is resolution, I would like to introduce resolution forty-two dash twenty-twenty-one and move that the rules be suspended, the law will be reading by number and only, and to dispense with the second, the reading.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution forty-two, two thousand twenty-one, a resolution authorizing that award of bid in agreement with American Roadway Logistics and an amount not to exceed ninety-four thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty cents for the two thousand twenty-one pavement marking project for the City of Perrysburg's Department of Public Service and declaring an emergency.
I do have discussion.
Hold on, before you, um, moved, do you want to explain why that was, uh, why it was supposed to be today and why you did it today? And we moved to pass? I was going to let, who can explain, there's usually some before we move.
Yeah, it was.
We, um, if this passes, we have a limited time in which to, um, sign the contract when the bids come in. And we were concerned that because the next city service meeting was outside, that may land this outside that time, we asked for the special meeting. So that's why we had the special meeting.
That's why there was a special meeting, it's supposed to win for the regular meeting.
Yes, that is the answer.
That's what I was trying to say.
And I knew that.
Okay.
I, I just have.
Hold on, we need to have motion to.
I move that resolution forty-two dash twenty-twenty-one be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Discussion.
Yes, um, on resolution forty-two, um, first thing I'd like to say is congratulations on the savings of thirty-five thousand dollars under budget or twenty-five, or twenty-seven percent less. Also, is this a, is this final amount going to be spent on this?
Yes.
And, um, you won't be asking for more money in the future on this one?
I would not like to commit to that because sometimes there are pandemics and crises and things happen that I cannot account for. We do not plan to ask for additional money on this project based on the specs that went out and the fact that this is not a construction project, we're purchasing steel or things like that. So, no, we do not plan to ask for additional monies on this project.
There also is, this is a pavement marking, this is not a construction contract, but there could be contingencies that would require.
Correct. That's why there are no contingencies in this. If that's, if that's sort of the heart of it, there are no contingencies because it, pavement marking is different than a construction project.
Pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
Uh, any other? I just want to just make a comment since the, um, we had this meeting beforehand and some of the council members weren't here. Kate knows exactly what I'm going to mention. And so, Jan, I, I do plan to vote for this. I, there's one concern I have with the, um, the type of paint that they use is, this is similar to what's on Soduski and the crosswalks. When I have run across them myself after a rain, while the pavement's still wet and the paint's still wet, it does become a little slick. Uh, so one of the things that was mentioned, uh, during the service committee is that they're going to look into making sure that the friction is, is still pretty solid in the wet environment. So pedestrians do not have any issues. so pedestrians do not have any issues using the crosswalks. That's just the comment I just wanted to make.
It's thermoplast.
Yeah. Thank you, Jan.
You're welcome.
I know you know that. All right, any other discussion, uh, roll call.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Second, resolution bringing before you, I would like to introduce resolution 43-2021 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second, third readings.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 43, 2021, a resolution authorizing the award of the bid in agreement with Perron Electric in an amount not to exceed $290,677 for the installation and purchase of traffic signals for the City of Perrysburg's Department of Public Service and declaring an emergency.
Uh, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I gotta, I gotta, yeah. I move that resolution 43-2021 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Discussion.
Yes, on Perron Electric, I would also like to compliment the administration on the savings of $49,000, and also that it was a low bid. And I also would like to ask the same question I asked before, you won't be asking for more money in the future, right?
Yes, it is the same answer, that there is no intention to ask for more, that there is no need for contingencies in a contract like this. I never want to say 100%, there's suddenly a cave-in, we lose all this plot, I mean, I never want to give you a 100%, I'll never be back, but no, the plan is to not ask for more money on this project.
The probability is pretty good it shouldn't. Does he just replace it and upgrade it?
Any other discussion? That, roll call.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy? Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Uzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
That is all I have, my next service committee meeting is Wednesday, July 28th, at 5:30 PM.
Just to be clear, this is another example of our timing of the committee, and the single council, August required necessary, special meeting, this has been our practice, and we hope to continue it to make sure that the administration brings the vote in, playing a time for this council. We appreciate the service committee's cooperation today. Any other business to come before this council?
Yes, I have some, Mr. Mayor. I wrote this down, because I didn't want to forget any details, if you will, but I was told by a constituent that she recently attempted to access the city council video from August, excuse me, June 15th, 2021, on the city's website, and was able to, to not utilize it because it was marked private and inexcusable, and I'd like to know why this happened.
I, I will just answer that.
Okay.
We have asked the administration IT director as to that question, and maybe we need to do some clarification about it. It is public, it's how you download it. If you mark, if you don't click on a button, it is, it doesn't convert it, so the person, as far as we know, it sounds like they downloaded it, marked it as private, so they couldn't access it. And then, am I saying anything correctly?
You've got it backwards.
Oh, it's, it's public.
So when we upload the videos, it takes, there's a, there's a lag time, and the person who uploads the videos needs to go back in and make them public. That information has now been conveyed to all the individuals who upload videos, but that is why that happened. There was just, the, the person did not go back in and upload, hit, change.
So the mistake was on the administration's part?
Right, it was not the person, it was the administration.
Yeah, we believe that the mistake was on the administration's part, although, I, but yes, we believe it's fixed and that this won't be a problem again.
And the other question I had since June 15th, 2021, was about three weeks ago. Apparently, as of today, you still could not access the minutes from that meeting.
They were approved today at city council and will now be uploaded.
Right.
You can also, you could also possibly think about putting a disclaimer there until they are approved by council, and that might help the public a little bit.
We, well, we will talk about that, but I, I believe is, because they're a reflection of the record as approved by council, better practice is to wait till council actually approves them before they're placed, and inference could be incorrectly drawn by, by a resident that your reading minutes that were actually approved by council, and that is not the case. It's better practice, has been in my experience, that you wait till the council actually approves them, and then you post them.
My concern would be just about the transparency aspect, and I know that we're all about that, so I'd just like to make sure we stay on that.
We will make sure, when our council's approved it, that they're uploaded. I would prefer to have it be approved primarily if there is something incorrect